We're just working, Reg. Palermo.
Here.
Festerson.
Here.
Harding.
Here.
Jerem.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Pauls. Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for our invocation today by Councilmember Amy Melton?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, as we're on tax day today, and as I always say, there's nothing sure in life other than death and taxes, and I think that's the realization that we have to have every year. But what I would like to say, as difficult as today may be, I would like to think that the members of this council keep in mind every day that the taxpayer dollars that we are spending is your money, and we should spend it wisely and appropriately to make this city an even better place than it is today. And I am very proud of the work that we do here, and I want to thank you all for being good stewards of our taxpayer money. Thank you.
Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chamber.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you all for being with us today, and as a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Item six, in ordinance to approve a major amendment to the mixed-use district development agreement for All Holy Spirit Greek Orthodox Church located at 215 South 181st Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number six is today. Proponents, please.
Nate Burnett, Reg Engineering, 601 Old Chaney, Lincoln, Nebraska, here today, excited. Thank you, council, for hearing this request. Currently, there's a mixed-use amendment on the site for three office buildings, and we are proposing the major amendment to show a four-story hotel with 120 rooms, fifth story with eight to 10 condos, and then on the south lot, the lot will be, has been split into two. We're showing two office buildings in accordance with the 10% office space requirement for the mixed-use district. We've had multiple meetings with planning staff. They're supportive of it. Pass Planning Commission 7-0. We're really excited about this hotel and the condos that will be on the fifth floor. Just one other thing of note is there will be separate parking for the condo owners, so they'll have their own access, and there's sufficient parking for the hotel. So with that, I just open up to any questions or comments.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard on item number six? Are there any opponents to be heard? CNN public hearing is closed. Is there, Mr. Harding?
Thank you, Mr. President. You don't need to come back to the podium. I was just going to make a general comment. I think, I want to thank Avant for their investment in this area, growing area of our town, but they've been very active in all areas of our town, both downtown and midtown and now out west, so I wish them good luck on the project. I think it'll be a good addition to the area. With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve item six. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Item seven, in ordinance to rezone the property located at 2720 Keystone Drive from DR and R2 District, low density to GI District. Portions of the property are located within the Floodway District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number seven is today. Proponents, please. Any favor, proponent?
Hello, my name is Todd Metzler with my wife, Chris Metzler. We're the owners of Maple 85. We're looking to expand our business from 21 years at our 85th and Maple location to one block west on 2720 Keystone Drive, which was a Lyman Richie concrete plant they used to wash their trucks in. We're turning it into a landscape rock center to add to our business for holders and flagstones and decorative as a green company. We're just looking to get it rezoned so we can expand our business.
Thank you. Are there any other proponent, is that, and you're just going to answer any questions we might have?
Yes, please.
Okay. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? CNN, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? CNN public hearing is, oh, I got an opponent?
I'm not sure, is this the right agenda? Is this the repaving of the streets on Nicholas Street?
No, we're not there yet.
We're not there yet? Okay. Are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Scared you didn't.
You recognize me neither.
There we go. We're lining up.
CNN, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to say, this is in my district, and I'm pleased to see your expansion on you. You've been there for a long time. It's been a successful business and a good citizen, and I'm also a client. I'll be by soon to get some more mulch, I'm sure.
Thank you. We've been honored and lucky with Omaha Magazine expanding their voting that we just were awarded three years in a row best mulch provider, and we're looking to, with the rock site, to expand. We're definitely a family-owned business and just trying to grow, so.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks for what you're doing, and I'll motion to approve.
Thank you.
Moving seconded to.
I'll give them a discount.
It's been, it's been moved and seconded to approve item seven. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you. And before we move to the next item, I wanted to recognize, or Mr. Festerson, would you like to do that? I'll go ahead and recognize. We have some young students here from the Young Southeast Asia Leadership Program who are here today. Would you all please stand to be recognized? And thank you for coming. We always appreciate you all coming in. We appreciate you being involved, and we hope you learned some valuable information, and you'll share it when you get back. Thank you all for being here. Madam Clerk.
Item eight, in ordinance to create street improvement district number 6884 in the city of Omaha for the purpose of improving Nicholas Street from North 87th Street West to its terminus and to fix and define the boundaries of said district.
Public hearing on agenda item number eight is today. Proponents, please. Those who are in favor.
You can, if you're going to testify.
Yeah, if all of you are going to testify, you can come down.
Or at least just tell us your name.
My name is Jennifer Napolitano, and I live at 8806 Nicholas Street, which is on the corner of Nicholas and 88. We are facing substantial costs to improve our roads and just would like to say that that's something that we definitely want to do. We are residents there. We take pride in our neighborhood. It's hard to do that when your curbs are crumbling, and every time people come to visit, they comment that they're going to get lost in the potholes, and, you know, it is, it's a frustrating situation to deal with. So I am here to support this movement and speak on behalf of the proponents.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Hi. My name is Joy Suter. I live at 1117 North 88th Street. I'm on, 88th Street intersects with Nicholas Street. When, in 2014, our neighborhood, so residents on 88th Street and Nicholas Street, received notice from the city that our roads were substandard, that they had exceeded their useful life, and that if we didn't get them fixed, then the city would, would mill the asphalt to make it into a granular surface. We met with the city, with City, with Public Works, sorry, a couple of times at the end of 2014, at the beginning of 2015, and unfortunately, it was just not in the budget of those of us who live on those streets to take on that task. We were thrilled that the city began to offer the cost-share option, and that really added some excitement and some fervor into residents on our two blocks to try to get these streets repaired. Roy Sides, who's not able to be here today because he's suffering from some pretty severe health issues, he's an original owner of a house on Nicholas Avenue. He actually lives on 8805 Nicholas Street, and I would speak on his behalf here as well today. He can't be here, but Roy and I took up the charge. I worked on 88th Street, and Roy was working on Nicholas Street. In the fall of last year, his health prevented him from continuing on working on this project and asked me to take it over. So even though I'm on 88th Street, I'm not on Nicholas Street. I'm here on behalf of Roy and others on Nicholas Street. 88th Street is unique in that we could not get a majority of the frontage ownership because we have one property on the west side of the street, just south of Nicholas, that is the equivalent of four lots on the east side of the street. And so without that support, there was just no way that we would ever find a majority of the frontage ownership for 88th Street. So that's why we decided to proceed with just the majority of the frontage on Nicholas Street. We would love it if we could get 88th Street done as well. I met with Public Works to see if there were ways that we could also get 88th Street accomplished, because it's just south of the main thoroughfare. Looking at the statutes and seeing how we could get that accomplished, we just can't. So we decided to proceed with just Nicholas Street at that time. We do have the majority of the frontage ownership for Nicholas Street that's been presented. The residents there are all very excited about that. We have, it's a hard-working neighborhood, and not any of us has a lot of money to spare. But truly, the opportunity to have the 50% cost-sharing is, has again sparked excitement that we can finally get our roads fixed. To be picked up by an Uber or to have friends come and pick us up and have to inch along our street is embarrassing. It's something that is, that we would just really love to get fixed, and we are grateful for the opportunity that the council will hear this request. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
My name is Justin Brady. I'm actually a new homeowner on Nicholas Street at 8817. I would also like to speak in favor of it. I think that the cost-sharing has definitely enabled this, this to happen, and that I find that the pain that we may suffer now through the repairs will be, will be gained later on the end when the cost is actualized. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Hi, I'm Kristy Brow. I've lived on 8714 Nicholas Street for 26 years. We just really need this street improvement. In the past, I don't know, we used to re-asphalt it, but anyhow, in the past, I don't know, 10 years, my neighbor and I have been buying the pot repair at Menards, and he's been, I buy it and he helps me fix the holes in front of my house. So, you know, I'm tired of doing this. I'd like to see it permanent, something permanent happen and really improve our street.
Thank you. Any other proponents who wish to be heard?
I'm Charles Ferguson. I live at 8721 Nicholas Street, and just like they said, our street is really bad, and like, people come, they're wondering where the heck we live that live on such a terrible street. And I thought, well, someday it's going to get fixed, so I'm just hoping we can get it fixed now, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents who wish to be heard on item number eight? Any other proponents? Any opponents who wish to be heard?
Hi, my name's Richard Reed. I live at 1491 113th Street in Laverne, Minnesota. I'm the owner of 1105 North 88th Street on the corner of 88th and Nicholas. My son was fortunate enough to be accepted at the Creighton Medical School, and we bought a blighted property that was in complete disrepair on that corner, and we spent a lot of time and money rehabbing that house to where it's a nice, small home now. At the end of his stay at Creighton University, we intend to probably sell this property. And it pains me to come up and be an opponent of this, because as my neighbors eloquently stated, that road is bad, all capital letters. It needs to be fixed. When I bought this property, at no time did I see anything that said that this road would not be taken care of by the city. I've been fortunate enough to live all over the country, and I've never been in a situation where the city did not take care of the street. I assumed that it probably was on an agenda sometime to get repaired. I called, in fact, City Hall after we had begun rehabbing, to touch base and make sure they knew that I wasn't happy with the street in front of my house, and was then informed that that was built not to code, and the city had nothing to do with it, and then found out they threatened to turn it into gravel and everything else. I understand now, after the fact, that there's no function to tell a homeowner, a prospective homeowner, that this is the case. It's up to the citizen to see that the road is bad, the curb is bad, and assume that it's a substandard road surface and isn't going to be taken care of. I don't think that's fair. I drove, it's a 440-mile round trip today, to tell you that this may pass the legal test. You may be well within your bounds, and I'm not trying to suggest that you frivolously spend the citizen's money, but this is something the city should take care of. Joy very properly stated, this is a working-class neighborhood. These are not rich people, and neither am I. We can't afford to pay for this and shouldn't have to. And I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
It does need done, and I want to say that I'm probably not going to try to stand in the way any further than voice in my opinion, but this is just wrong. Like I said, it may pass the legal test, but I don't think it passes the smell test. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents who wish to be heard? CNN public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. So this stretches in my district, and I think where we see the prevalence of unimproved roads, in my district at least, it's in the Florence area, and it's in the Keystone area, and it's in this Penny Park area that we're talking about here today. And I'm pleased to see so many neighbors come down and talk about it and express their opinions and to be engaged on it. This was one of the original ground zeros in the reclaimed street situation many years ago, as some testifiers have explained, until really the city council got engaged and said, we don't think that's right either. So I agree with all the testimony today and also Richard's testimony that it's a difficult situation and in many cases, an unfair situation, that the city should be taking care of, but hadn't over the, over the years of development and, and not having the requirements of developers to bring streets up to code when they, when they occurred. But now, we're in a situation where we're trying to catch up to that, and estimates are, it's a $300 million price tag to do all those streets throughout the city, which is a very substantial hurdle, which is where we are today in terms of talking about how can the city and the city council incent, or at least help neighbors fund these projects to ensure they do start to get done throughout the city. And so we've seen several of them recently and in the last few years whereby we've engaged the practice of cost-sharing, which we had never done before, to help make that possible, even though I think it is a legitimate opinion that it'd be nice if the city could just do 100% of these streets and get them done. But I think, I think the reality of where we are today is this process that we have whereby a neighborhood can entertain the process that you've gone through, to have petitions and indicate that you do want this to move forward, and you do want the city's help in getting this done. So I might just engage Joy here for a minute, if she wouldn't mind coming back up. I had originally started talking with Roy about this project too, and I hope he's doing well and maybe even watching today, but then had started working with Joy on this as well as they made that transition. And so, Joy, if you would, I think we have 16 properties within this boundary, right?
Yeah.
Give me a chance to count.
Yes, there are 16 properties along Nicholas, 16 properties along Nicholas Avenue on the street that we're talking about, yes.
And the majority, how many signed a petition or wanted this to happen?
The.
I'm sorry, before you go ahead, can you name an address for the record again, please?
Sure. Joy Suter, 1117 North 88th Street. 10 property owners signed petitions, so 10 of the 16 owners signed a petition. The total square footage, and I confirmed all of these numbers with Public Works, so I'm not speaking out of turn, the total square, uh, front footage, sorry, the total front footage that's represented by these 16 properties is 1,220.38. 51% of that total would be 622.39. The 10 property owners that signed petitions represent 794.61. So it's a majority of the, both in number of homeowners, but also in ownership of the front footage. Mr. Gravy, who just testified in support, he's a new homeowner since we signed our petitions last summer, and so he would be an 11th property owner that's in support.
So it's a strong indication of support to me that the strong majority of neighbors do want this to happen, and I'm glad you addressed 88th Street too, because that is a, I noticed that too when I was driving this, and confirmed that it is in very bad condition and needing help, that when we do complete this phase of it, it would also be nice to actually do 88th, which goes to Western, but I understand the situation you're facing there with one really large lot there that may not want that to occur, and so it does at this point take some consensus amongst neighbors to do these things. But that's why we're talking about Nicholas Street today. I think that is a good first step forward. And as we talked over the last several weeks or months even, I do support the city's 50% cost-share, and presuming this gets approved today and created today as a district, next week, we'll have a resolution on our agenda that will formally approve the city's 50% cost-share into that, which I have requested and will support, and I hope my colleagues do too.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
You bet. With that, I would motion approval.
Moving seconded to approve item number, yeah, I'm sorry. Ms. Melton?
Thanks, Councilman Jer. Ms. Suter. First of all, this is just another example of something that you do for the community, because it just seems like every time I run into you, you are doing something else as a volunteer that's making our community better. So I just want to thank you for continuing to keep on with this, even though you can't get your own street done.
Right.
For your neighbor.
Thank you.
And, and then I just wanted to say, we, we had had some, some kind of issues before where the neighbors on the street had agreed to it, but were agreeing to something different than what they thought, because, you know, their, their neighborhood leader maybe wasn't clear, or for whatever reason it was. So I just want to be clear that all the residents know, you were talking about frontage, so is everybody going to, have they agreed to split the cost by frontage or by, by property, equalizing each owner?
The, what has been communicated to the property owners is that their responsibility, their portion of the 50%, would be based on their front-footage ownership.
Okay.
So not the number of properties, but by the square, I keep saying square footage, but by the front footage of the property.
Frontage, okay.
Correct.
And then that, and that's what's been presented to everybody, and I think we'll, we'll be moving forward. And that's, that's where we want, we don't want to be having these arguments at the Board of Equalization when somebody says, well, I'm paying more than my neighbor. And we said, well, in the beginning, this is, this is how the neighbors agreed to do it.
Right, and I, and I would, just to buttress that, I'll, I'll let you know that the corner lots understand that because of the, the, how their lots are bigger, that they would be assessed a larger amount, and that is of concern for some of our larger, wider property owners. The, for example, Ms. Napolitano, who just testified, she's on a corner lot of 88th Street and Nicholas, and she signed two petitions, one representing her interest and support in having 88th Street completed, and one for Nicholas Street. So I believe I can assure you that it's been communicated that each side of a house would be, would require separate approval in order to show that we understand that that square footage would have an, or the front, the frontage would have an impact on the cost associated by property.
Okay, and I fully support this, and, and I would agree, and I, and I understand that Councilman Festerson has a number of these roads. The city council wishes that there was more we could do, but I think prior, you know, a couple of years ago, people were having to pay, I think when you started it, it was 100%.
Right.
So at least now, we are cost-sharing in this, and I know that'll be on the agenda next week. So I'm glad that we're able to at least assist in this effort and we're able to work together. And again, thank you for all your work and all the neighbors that came down here with you. I want to thank all of you for getting together and helping make your neighborhood better, which again, leads to a better city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Melton.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, President Gray. Thank you, Councilmember Melton, for clearing up half of the questions I had of previous discussions. I didn't catch, ma'am, how long have you lived in this area or along that stretch?
13 years.
13 years.
Since 2005.
So you, just so I can wrap my head around this, so 2014, this process started.
Yes.
So let's say from 2014 back, what was the conditions of the roads then, and how did you deal with them?
My understanding from Mr. Sides, from Roy Sides, who's not able to be here, Roy is an original homeowner on Nicholas Street, and Roy actually used to work for the city. And so Roy has had a lot of keen insight based on his history in, in Public Works, but my understanding is what the commute, what the two streets used to do would, every five years or so, Roy would get a bid for, to chip-seal, I believe is the terminology, to chip-seal the asphalt, and that would be shared amongst the homeowners. And we moved into the house in 2005, and I believe the first time Roy tried to do this was in 2007, since we had lived there. And it was clear that the street was deteriorating. Similar to Mr. Reed, I was horrified at the prospect that I had to pay to fix my road. And as a new homeowner, I thought, well, what in the world does this mean? It's a road. It'll be fine. Subsequently, I've learned that asphalt is not as sturdy as concrete and cement, and that it is necessary to do the chip-seal. We've had some turnover in homeownership on 88th Street, so as we've had new homeowners join the block, trying to explain to them about the chip-seal, they had the same reaction that I did, and they weren't interested. And so I think, and really Charlie Ferguson could tell you the timeline more, Mr. Ferguson who testified, because he also is a longtime homeowner on Nicholas Street, as is Ms. Brow, but they, I think every five years or so, Roy would head up this committee to get, for the homeowners to pay for the road, to get the chip-seal done so that the asphalt would last longer. That has not happened in the 13 years that I've lived in my house, and in 2014, when the city presented that they would turn it to gravel, we knew that that was not a good idea, because we also are at the top of a hill. And so the idea of gravel being. And so the idea of gravel being washed away down into the sewer drains didn't seem like a good idea. We also thought that the asphalt that we did have would be better than gravel, easier to plow, easier to have our kids ride bikes on the street. So that's the history as I know it in the 13 years that I've lived there.
Okay, thank you. That's a great timeline.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, and since we're kind of talking about street maintenance, the other thing I wanted to point out in this conversation that is significant about what you're doing here today is that you won't have to chip seal anymore. Should this be approved and cost shared and constructed, because it is a street improvement district, which means cement, this will then in perpetuity become the city's responsibility to maintain going forward, so that's a huge benefit of what you're undertaking here today too.
Right.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. There are no more lights, it's been moved and seconded to approve item eight. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, seven to zero. Item nine, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Bucks Inc., doing business as Buc-Ee's number 24, located at 2223 South 24th Street.
Public hearing agenda item number nine is today. Proponents, please.
Hi there, I'm Robert Deising. I reside at 1005 East Aberdeen Drive, Pavilion, Nebraska.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish, are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deising. I just wanted to let you know that Mr. Palermo and I went down to the store over the lunch hour and, because it's on our shared boundary of our districts, and as we're there, it's a very small store, not really in a neighborhood district. During the time we were there, there was not one walk-in customer, they were all drive up, getting fuel and coming in the store, so the concerns that sometimes arise on what is truly a neighborhood convenience store with single sales of the distilled spirits in the 50 milliliter bottles, I don't think will be a concern, but you are close to two parks, one to the north and one to the east, and would urge you to keep an eye out for litter in the neighborhood because those would be the type of container that we sometimes see happen. And on your whole property, we only found one can, it was an energy drink that somebody had dropped, and it blew out into Martha, and before we could pick it up, a car crushed it, so. Mr. Palermo, since he was in the shotgun seat, didn't think he wanted to go out in the traffic and pick up the trash, but otherwise, very clean, well-maintained property. So I spoke with Mr. Buchanan too, who called, and told him that I would be supportive because of what we observed and the type of location of the store, so I would make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second, no further lights, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, seven to zero. Item 10, an application to appoint Jack R. Barta as manager of Jayson Jackson LLC, doing business as Jayson Jackson to their Class C liquor license located at 1101 Jackson Street.
Public hearing agenda item number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, I'm Bruce Festerson. I am at 1832, excuse me, Fawn Circle Drive, Fremont, Nebraska. I'm here representing Jack Barta.
Thank you, just here to answer any questions. Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded, well, he moved it, you want to second it? Moved and seconded to approve item 10, there are no further lights, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 10 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 11, an application to appoint Brian T. Wall as manager of Old Market Seafood LLC, doing business as Plank Seafood Provisions to their Class I liquor license located at 1205 Howard Street.
Public hearing agenda item number 11 is today. Proponents, please.
I'm Brian Thomas Wall. I'm the general manager at Plank Seafood. I'm just requesting that I'm added to the Class I liquor license at the location, please?
Sure. Address, please.
My address is, my home address is 11405 South 43rd Street, Bellevue, Nebraska.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, seven to zero. Item 12, an application to appoint Chad H. Gumbert as manager of Upstream Brewing Company LLC, doing business as Upstream Brewing Company to their Class IL liquor license located at 514 South 11th Street.
Public hearing agenda item number 12 is today. Proponents, please.
Chad Gumbert, 5208 South 80th Street, Rawlston, Nebraska.
Thank you, and you're just here to answer any questions with my, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Moved and seconded to approve item 12, no lights, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 12 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda items numbers 13 and 14 were held on April 10th, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 13 and 14 are approved, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 15 through 32 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments on two items, number 19, and along with that 22, which are resolutions related to the widening of 168th, basically between Pacific Street and Q Street, and I'm glad to see that project moving forward, it looks like we're going to start in 2020. And then the last item is number 30, which is the reappointment of Carly Anderson to the Elcor, Old Town Elcorn Business Improvement District. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Second.
Moving and seconded to approve items 15 through 32, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 15 through 32 are approved, seven to zero. Item 33, a resolution to approve the Landmark Building Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan for a redevelopment site located northeast of 13th and Harney Streets in the amount of $9,824,122.
Public hearing agenda item number 33 is today. Proponents, please.
So before you, there's the Landmark Building TIP Redevelopment Project Plan, which proposes to convert four office floors of the Landmark Building into 128 rooms of an upper upscale boutique hotel. What I'm trying to demonstrate, hopefully you can see it, the property is outlined in blue, so this is the office building, and then connected to it is the parking garage, so this represents the TIP. The actual rehab and conversion will actually only take place on the site of the office building. 15-story office building, Class A, has had some vacancies since Pac Life left around December 15, 2015, and Jason and his group have been working on trying to figure out how to reactivate this building, so this hotel opportunity gives the downtown area and the old market another chance to live again with more vitality, and it also helps to take this Class A office space and bring it back to life. There will be four different floors, and not to take too much of his thunder, I think he has a presentation he wants to go through, a lot of those slides are in your application packet. The amount of the TIP is just over 9.8 million, it's a $62 million investment. They had about 42 million in TIP eligible costs, but really wanted to focus on the TIP eligible expenses that pertain to the actual conversion and rehab within the office space. There will be an addition of a restaurant that will be added to the second floor there on the south side, and then there's some addition to the north side of the building that they're doing to the building, so lots of rehab and some additions to the actual footprint of the building, some really exciting things that will help activate, again, that space and will be a plus to the downtown area. Has approved, been approved by the TIP Committee, it does meet the community development law and our TIP guidelines, and with that, I will step aside, I'll ask for your approval and then step aside and let the developer speak more.
Thank you. Just any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon. Jason Fisher, 17534 Baywood Circle, Omaha, Nebraska, the developer here. In the interest of time, I'll breeze through this, I get excited about the project and talking about it, so, am I queuing this? Okay. Oh, perfect. There we go. For clarification, the office towers, the 15-story building on the right, CenturyLink owns the data center, the five-story data center on the left still, and I would add, they've been a real proponent and help on this project, very supportive. So, delivered in 1991, still, it has a relevant aesthetic, we're proud of that, all glass curtain, curtain wall facade. As Bridget mentioned, the challenge, there's a couple of challenges that I'll talk about today that we are addressing, one of which is a vacancy issue. It's been 50%, right around 50% vacant since December of 2015, and with the available space in the old market currently, and additions of, you know, some additional office square footage available, we felt like leasing up the building as primarily office was going to be a challenge. In addition, it's got, it's underparked for an office user, so, and subsequently, we're sitting here with a declining tax value and market value as well. So we evaluated many, many changes in use, we settled on, and it's not settling, we actually ended up on an upper upscale hotel conversion for six floors, four of those would be rooms, as Bridget mentioned, and then there's two hotel amenity lobby and amenity spaces, so, and this felt really good, especially in visiting with the Omaha Convention Visitors Bureau and understanding that experts believe we're still underserved in the upper upscale hotel arena. So we've been diligently working on that. The end result for the property is that it will be almost fully occupied and fully activated, which is great, so we think the occupancy rate will be in the 90% to 93% by the time we open the hotel. Apologize for the size of this, the important thing that I wanted to mention for this group in case you missed it in the TIP application, to the right is Jean Lahey Mall, if you will. The hotel lobby and entrance is actually going to be on the north side. We feel like that's really, really important to activate Farnham Street, and as Bridget also mentioned, there will be an addition in the form of an entrance and some sort of portico, so it'll have a really nice arrival presence, and our front yard will be Jean Lahey Mall. On the south side, which I'll talk about in a second, we, the plan is, we are going to build a two-story addition, and that's important for many, many reasons, but our signature restaurant will be out there, sort of engaging the old market, which is a major entertainment, food and beverage destination, as you all know. That's the first floor, you know, traditional upper upscale lobby that hopefully will be a place that's very active for breakfast, a place to work during the day and have lunch and then even dinner. There's some mood images that'll give you a sense for the quality of design that we're after. On the second floor, amenity spaces continue for the hotel, on the north side or the right side will be roughly 200-person meeting space, and then individual medium-sized boardroom spaces and corporate training facilities, as well as a fitness facility that will service the hotel and the office occupants. And then that addition on the left side, which is the south side, the plan is for a rooftop bar, that will have light, you know, small plate food options as well. Mood images for the signature restaurant, for the hotel amenity spaces, and for the rooftop bar, to give you a sense of the design. We learned that the building is very well structured and designed for hotel rooms. It has zero columns from the core of the building to the curtain wall, to the exterior, and the mullion spacing in the windows is perfect for kind of traditional sizing of hotel rooms. So we think this is going to be really special, unobstructed views in all directions and floor-to-ceiling glass in the rooms, and because of the size of the building, these, the rooms will be, you know, 20% to 30% larger than most king-size standard hotel rooms. So we're excited about that. Here's some pressing images for the hotel room design, hotel rooms, and a summary of the hotel. So, upper upscale hotel, in addition, the remaining floors, that's six floors, nine stories, will maintain office. We are enhancing the office component of this property too, and Bridget, we didn't talk about this or included it in TIP eligible expenses, but we are going to spend a little money on the parking garage and try to give that a better aesthetic and tie that into the old market a little bit better. One of the challenges that was created, it's a wonderful development, but one of the challenges that was created is, you know, it's built over two square blocks in downtown and really served as a little bit of a barrier for north-south connectivity for the old market, so a stated objective of our team is to help and enhance those connections again. And I'll point out, on the right-hand side, there's a 6,000-square-foot retail parcel that we own that isn't part of this application, but I do want the council to know that we have plans on that, and I'll show a picture of that, because that's a pretty inactive corner that we'd like to solve. This is 13th and Harney, this is the southwest corner of the building, and the building sits back, and although that's a wonderful thing because it even creates the opportunity for a courtyard, the reality is in the old market, because the rest of the properties sit out to the property line, it creates sort of an inactive corner. So our team felt it was important to add that addition, to bring that, to bring some action to the property line on the Harney Street side. This is that retail bay on 11th Street, so this is the southwest corner of 11th and Farnham, and just for point of reference, it's a part of our overall goal and objective to really help 11th Street be a north-south connector, and then I'll touch on the project that we're talking about, the Landmark Center. This is the addition, this is the rendering of the two-story addition, it's actually vaulted two stories, so it'll effectively look like three stories, with the signature restaurant on the main level and a rooftop bar slash food and beverage component on the second. And this is the courtyard right next to that, there's actually public access north-south through what we call the link, the lobby of the office building, and I just referenced it because we've spent a lot of time programming those plaza areas, working with Bridget and city planning to make sure that we enhance the public, the public interface with this project, and that's really where we think we can enhance that north-south connectivity. A couple, there's public improvements that go along with this, 13th Street, down Farnham, et cetera, and we really want to take some pride in the plaza spaces and what we're calling an activated old market plaza. As I stated before, I think it's important just to let you know that in addition to the connection between the old market and Jean Lahey, that's a stated goal, but we really want this to be as exciting and stimulating a place as it's want this to be as exciting and stimulating a place as it's located in, which is Omaha and the old market. And so, if there's any questions, I'm here to answer those.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there, yes?
Sorry, Bridget, I was city planning. I just wanted to make mention that we did ask for a 3% TIF contribution from this project, and I just wanted to make note that we are getting that, and that's really great, it's about 300,000 of the total TIF, which is 9.8 million, a little over 9.8 million. Of that 300,000, 100,000 is going toward our downtown public improvement fund, and we've just been adding money to that fund so that we can do more improvements, public improvements and enhancements in the downtown area. And then about 200,000 of that contribution will be used for public improvements, as Jason pointed out, adjacent to and surrounding the project site. So, just wanted to make mention of that.
Thank you. Are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Luis Jimenez, 518 North 40th Street. I've been listening, been looking at this for the last couple of weeks, and I really don't see why the city needs to forego $9,824,000 on this, especially on something as to do with hotel rooms. I've heard this city council speak on the fact that the city's struggling to fill hotel rooms and other venues, and, you know, but I heard developers say that they're going to have a 90% fill, they're going to fill their rooms. Well, I think that this is such a great thing, they should pay the $9,824,000 in taxes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed, Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Fisher, if you would, I just wanted to first thank you for this reinvestment, a major reinvestment, back into our downtown and into a property, as you noted, that has been underutilized for a period of years. So, to have this reinvestment happen there and have this plan occur is really great, and to have the presentation you had today, too, which was very thorough, is much more than we typically get on some of these presentations or agenda items, so I appreciated that, too. And I think it was evident in your presentation there how much thought you've given to the project and its connectivity to the mall and to the old market and its surrounding neighbors there. During my career, I've had office space both across the street and also just across the street to the west, and so I'm very familiar with this block, and I like what you've conceived here and what you intend to do. Did you want an opportunity to suggest or respond to the notion of why TIF is necessary for the project?
Well, yeah, no, I appreciate, you know, all viewpoints and protecting the taxpayers' dollars, so appreciate that viewpoint. This is clearly a but-for project. In addition to TIF, we are pursuing and have commitments for some new market tax credit dollars as well, but to convert a project like this, this magnitude, doesn't happen without some incentives like tax agreement financing. So, we've done, you know, obviously the TIF, the middle had the but-for analysis, and it is clearly necessary for the project to go.
Thanks. And for those that are familiar with that terminology, the but-for terminology means it would not occur but for the incentive of having TIF to make this possible. Do you want to address that?
Can I tag you with Jason for a second? Sorry, John Blumenthal, 1700 Farnham Street, Omaha 68102, I'm the attorney representing the developer, and I did just want to take a moment just to respond, and I appreciate that viewpoint, but would point out that in addition to the but-for analysis, this is unlike other projects, that you do have a declining tax base on this building, this truly is, on the but-for analysis, this is a once-in-a-lifetime, in my mind, opportunity to increase the tax base greatly with this building, and this is a unique opportunity to do that. I also wanted just to point out to the council that in addition to what we've talked about activating this area, that there will be, as you've seen in the application, city sales tax and hotel lodging taxes in excess of $400,000 generated a year on this project. Also, 350 construction jobs will be created by this project. So, we're certainly sensitive to taxpayers and feel like this is an opportunity to give back to the tax base and create jobs while we're doing so.
Thank you.
I would add that the projections are for 150-plus full-time positions added as a result of the hotel, although some of those are heavy on tips, the vast majority of those are certainly above the underemployed line that we all kind of look at in this market. We're working with Metro Community College on some potential tracks that would include food service management, et cetera, so we're really, I would say that, I think there was a supplement in the TIF application, I'm not sure about our, we did a community impact, we did a self-community impacts story, study, and really wanted to make sure that we stated that this was beyond just a real estate development, and so I'm proud of that, too.
And it's been reported, or at least, I don't know if it's been announced, but it's been reported that a major tenant will be Mutual Omaha Bank, is that correct?
That's correct.
Top floors, I presume?
Yeah, half of the 15th floor, which is the top floor, the other's occupied by a law firm, Stinson, and the 14th floor.
So I think it's a great opportunity in that respect to, will there be signage associated with that on the building?
We're working on that right now, yes, and, you know, the hotel entrance on the north side, we want to really give that a great presence, but we also have to make sure that the office component, which is significant, gets its fair appearance, if you will. And so, we're working on, that link will likely be dressed up and be obvious that it's the office entrance to the building. So there'll be signage in there, there'll be wayfinding with regard to the courtyard, and there's going to be building signage as well.
Great. Well, I'm pleased to support this today, and on a personal note, too, it's nice to see you back in Omaha. We've had the opportunity to see each other out of town at a teenage volleyball tournament, so I'm glad you survived the three days as well.
You did.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Jarom.
Yeah, I'm glad there's so much excitement about what's going on in downtown today, that, you know, everyone's basically cheerleading here. But whenever you have a space as prominent as this space is in the downtown, a 50% occupancy with declining tax valuation because of that occupancy, which is driven by the value of your leases, that's something to be concerned about. But downtown is in need of a boost, it's in need of a shot in the arm, and we're here today to take some steps to get that shot in the arm going again. And there's some of your neighbors and downtown enthusiasts that are behind you here today that are really rooting for your success and the success of not only the space, but the occupants who are filling the spaces. So, we welcome you to downtown, and I'm pleased to support this, and glad that you'll be back up at 90, 95% occupancy soon. So, congratulations to you and welcome to downtown.
Thank you.
Mr. Harding.
Mr. President, I need to learn to hit my button a little sooner, so I don't sound like I'm repeating everything that's been said previously, but I will touch on a few things, and I, one of the things that I think we're at least alluded to, but really with some of the plans that are anticipated to potentially be happening in the downtown area, both for the riverfront and Jean Lahey Mall, which you will be fronting as you mentioned, I can't think of any other word than excitement for this project. And having, also having a major tenant that was discussed here with Mutual Omaha Bank coming down, they had a number of options where they could have located, too, and coming downtown is a really good sign, I think, and we're glad to have them in the downtown area, because not only are there a lot of things happening today, but there are a lot of things on the board being planned, and I think this will be a great part of it. I'll just make a quick mention on the TIF, the TIF is about 16%, at least by my calculation, which is very much in line with this kind of a project, and I think it will be well-served and is well-deserved for this project. So, thanks for your investment.
Moving seconded to approve, there are no further lights, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 33 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 34, a resolution that the city council supports approval of each of the general obligation bond ballot questions and urges their approval by Omaha's voters on May 15, 2018.
Public hearing, agenda item number 34 is today, proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. I asked for this resolution to appear on the agenda so that we could take a position, if we so desired to do so, in support of the five issues, bond issues that will be on the ballot. And knowing that voting is already occurring because of the early vote starting last week, I thought it was important to get out in front of it as much as we could to take a position on that. So these five issues are very important for the continued development and financial management of our city. It won't, it will not create a tax increase by the passage of these, which I think is important to note, because there will be, at least for some citizens in some areas, they will have an additional bond item related to a school that will cause a tax increase. So I wanted to make sure that we understood what the differences were, that it was not going to be a tax increase to the citizens of Omaha. I know there are a number of organizations that have also publicly stated their position, including the Chamber of Commerce, Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom, and many others in support of this. So, I was glad to move this action forward, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to approve, Ms. Melton.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilman Harding, for putting this on our agenda today so that our voice could be heard as a resolution. But a number of people, even on Nextdoor, and I've attended some meetings where people felt like they truly didn't feel like they knew where the money was going. And so just for purposes of transparency and information to the public, Mr. Curtis, I'm going to ask, just so that I don't get all the numbers wrong, I wanted you to, our numbers guy, to give the figures, the amount of the bond, and then if you could break it down into the public works, some examples of the roads that would be covered, parks, et cetera, I think that would be really important for the people. And then I wanted to talk about where they could go to find our capital improvement projects online, but obviously they could contact any one of us here on the council, but I would appreciate if you would give us that information.
Sure. My dance, I will remind everybody that the city employees are neutral as required, so I'll just simply give you information about it. This will be on the May 15 ballot, and this is an authorization for general obligation bonds, you'll often hear them called GO bonds. As the council members have stated, there will be no tax increase because the city for years now has worked within its stated debt service levy so that we retire bonds, bring new issuances on, and stay within our levy and our debt service. It covers a period of primarily 2019 to 2023, not exclusively, because we sort of work within our authorization to get the projects done, and those do change somewhat over time. And as the council members have stated, this is in the CIP, and you can find it both on the planning website and on the finance website, if you want, if any citizen wants great, great detail. The bond issuance, the authorization for all five categories is approximately 227 million, and the first of the five categories is transportation bonds. And within that, a couple of projects of note are 26th and Q Street Ridge Replacement, 72nd and Maple Intersection Improvements, 156th Street from Pepperwood to Corby, 168th Street from West Center to Q, and some intersection improvements at 132nd and Center. So that's the first category, transportation bonds. The second category is environmental bonds. First, on transportation bonds, one thing I neglected to say, that is the majority of the bond issuance, and that is 151 million approximately. The next grouping is the environmental bonds at about 11.5 million, and in there is the Thomas Creek Stream Bank Stabilization, Colt Creek Culvert Replacement, and Missouri Ribby Levy Certification Project, and that'll be Phase 1, for those of you who know what those are, good for you. The next section is the Parks and Recreation Bonds, 15.5 million, and in there is Adams Park, and this is not an exhaustive list, these are just some examples of what's in all of these categories. Adams Park Playground and Picnic Areas, Mandan Park Renovations, and Lawrence Youngman at the Lake Park Trail. Again, there's a much more exhaustive list on those websites we mentioned earlier and in the CIP. The fourth grouping at 9.8 million are public safety bonds, those primarily pay for large fire equipment, including medic units, pumpers, and aerial ladders. The final grouping is public facilities bonds at 39.4 million, and in there, items are Fifth Precinct, the one that's going into Elkhorn, the fire station, number 31 in South Omaha, and some other public facility renovations and repairs. And again, there are many, many projects in there, and feel free to go to the CIP if you'd like to see the details.
Thank you very much, and again, that CIP, it's our capital improvement projects, and we put those out in basically five-year, five-to-six-year plans, we add a year each year. And I think the websites we were talking about is, you can go to the City of Omaha, and you can click on either planning or finance to find those, and I really do want to thank the city over the last year, the last Capital Improvement Project book that came out actually has pictures, it's a lot easier to read, you can actually tell what projects we're talking about much, much better than the Capital Improvement book that I had to sit down and spend an hour and have somebody teach me how to read when I first became a council member. So, I really appreciate the improvements in the Capital Improvement Project Plan book that has been put out and that is now online. So, thank you for giving us the details on exactly where the money is going, giving us some examples of where some of those projects are going. I think we just had on here that 168th Street from Pacific to Q, and Councilman Harding and Councilman Paul's district, which we've talked about earlier on this agenda. And so, I think that where the money is going is very transparent, and that it's very important that these bonds do get passed. And so, thank you, and I support the resolution.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo.
Mr. Gray. Vinnie Palermo, 4520 South, I guess you don't need that. I was just going to say, I am a proponent, when you called, I would have went over there and said that, but, so thank you to Councilman Harding for bringing this forward, I am definitely in support of each of these GO bonds. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Mr. Curtis, I just need you to explain to me a little bit more in depth. Can you say where there's a police station, fire station, we're going to be doing roads? Is that not true?
Steve Curtis, City Finance, I maybe didn't quite catch your whole question.
Well, you indicated that there are certain projects that are going to be, hopefully to be accomplished, like a new police station, fire station, roads, streets?
That's correct.
Okay. See, I think we needed to go a step further. Who, where does most of that money stay? I mean, okay, the fire station, or the police station, or the roads, I mean, does that money lead the City of Omaha?
I guess technically, no, it stays here in the community.
See, so I think sometimes we are under the assumption that we're collecting all these taxes and they're going someplace. Well, most of these taxes are reinvested into the city. A number of our, I just encourage people, once you see some of these things that we're passing, see who are the beneficiaries of this. A lot of these are local businesses, and so I think sometimes we need to take it a step further, and it's not only that we're getting these things, but it's actually being plowed back into the community, there are jobs, there are people who live here, and it's not money that's actually, for the most part, leaving the City of Omaha. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to add, too, for perspective, and because I want people to know, that we've talked a lot about roads and our roads needs today and in previous weeks, and I'm sure that'll continue, because those needs are tremendous. So I want folks to realize that more than half of this bond issue for the city on the ballot will be attributed to transportation. ballot will be attributed to transportation, which means roads. One hundred and fifty-one million dollars worth of the two hundred and twenty-seven million dollar overall issue. And that's not by happenstance. The city council and the mayor have worked intentionally to increase that amount over the years, and as other debt has been retired. So we are concentrating more of this ability into our streets as part of the solution to our long-term challenges there. And as context, if you go back to two thousand and ten, the transportation element of that bond issue was forty-four million. In two thousand and fourteen, it was forty-seven million, and now it's one hundred and fifty-one million. So I want people to know the importance of that to our road system as well when they vote in May. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve item thirty-four. There are no more lights. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirty-four is approved, seven to zero. Item thirty-five, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a purchase order to Camira Water Solutions, Inc., in the amount of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the purchase of ferric chloride to be utilized at the water resource recovery facilities to be effective for a period of twelve months, and is extendable for two one-year periods with approval of both parties.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-five is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item thirty-six, an ordinance approving an agreement with Don Aaron's of Cass County, Nebraska, for the land application of stabilized sewage sludge for an agreement period ending December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, with up to four automatic one-year renewals.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-six is today. Proponents, please.
North Fortieth Street. I just wanna comment on an idea that was put forth during pre-meeting of getting this slush, sludge, and compost put together, save some money. I would offer that perhaps if the city decided to go with bioplastics on the plastic bags, which are made by vegetable oil and other things of that nature, you could put those with the compost and the sludge and, you know, be friendly to the environment and resolve the bags issue. Because the bags, single-use bags right now are petroleum-made, and those take a thousand years to break down. If you go with bioplastics, they break down in a much shorter amount of time, but they go through the process of breaking down, and then they release methane and other greenhouse gases. So if you put these bioplastic bags with the compost and the slush, I think it solves, or gets three birds with one stone. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents or opponents that wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item thirty-seven, an ordinance effecting a portion of Lewis Drive commencing approximately seventy-eight feet east of the east right-of-way line of Ninety-Fifth Street to the dead end of the Lewis Drive right-of-way and abutting Lot Seven, Block Seven of Maynor Meadows, and Lot Two, Block Zero of Brighton Gardens subdivisions. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-seven is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item thirty-eight, an ordinance levying a special tax and assessment on certain lots, parts of lots, and pieces of real estate in the city of Omaha to cover the cost of constructing sidewalks in District Number SWR two thousand and seventeen dashes zero one A's communication and opposition.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-eight is today. Proponents, please.
Robert Boyd, Public Works, here to answer questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item thirty-nine, an ordinance approving a real estate purchase agreement with Michael Kirby to convey the property located at three-five-one-five North Thirtieth Street in the amount of eight hundred dollars.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-nine is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item forty, an ordinance approving a real estate purchase agreement with Habitat for Humanity of Omaha, Inc., to convey the property located at three-six-zero-nine North Nineteenth Street in the amount of a dollar.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item forty-one, an ordinance levying a special assessment for fees and civil penalties on certain lots in the city of Omaha, Group Number two thousand and eighteen dashes zero one A's communication and opposition.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-one is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item forty-two, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the Downtown Business Improvement District, Number six-eight-seven-four, to increase the special assessment cap for the district by allowing a ten percent increase from point four-three-nine per thousand dollars of assessed value to point four-eight-four per thousand dollars for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen work year with an increase of three percent per year thereafter.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-two is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Holly Barrett, fourteen zero-three Farnham Street, Unit eight oh two. I am the Executive Director of the Omaha Downtown Improvement District. Thank you so much for hearing us today. I'm gonna try to be brief to get you out of here as soon as possible. We're here today on behalf of the Omaha Downtown Improvement District, the organization which focuses on improving our downtown public realm through cleanliness, increased security, beautification, activation, advocacy, all of these things, which you all know. We're here today to support our request for what we see as a very modest increase in the assessment that funds our organization. I think the most important statement that can be made right off the bat is that we've crafted this request over several years, and with the input from every single constituent in our district that we could possibly reach. And our request is such that if you approve it, it will allow our organization to expand in a very small but extremely impactful way. Namely, we intend to use the additional funds, which will total about forty thousand, to bring on one more full-time staff person for our Clean and Green Team, which is our most important and currently most needed program. Quick little history, we were the first improvement district to be created in Omaha eleven years ago, and we were essentially an experiment in urbanism. The experiment's proven itself a success, the proof being that my office receives requests for our services every single day, and the fact that our downtown population is growing by leaps and bounds only says to us that the need for our services is now being outstripped by our current ability to respond. When we were first chartered, we were set in place with an extremely low assessment rate and no accelerator built in. Thank you so much. So what you're seeing right now, or you will in just a second, and you do have this in your packet, is a comparison of our assessment rate against the rates of some of our peer and aspirational cities. Oh, the important one is not even there. The hope at that point was that the downtown development would be intense enough to lead to a rise in property values, which would allow us to grow organically. And this has happened to a certain extent, but it hasn't happened to such a rate that that kind of growth mechanism would have really worked to allow us to keep up with the need for increasing services as our density, as our population continues to grow. In fact, in other areas of the city, when they began to develop their own improvement districts, such as Elkhorn and Benson, they learned from our mistakes, and they built their own accelerators into their ordinances. So what we're looking at now is a comparison of the Omaha BID assessments, including their accelerators. And you can see that while we are the largest and certainly most comprehensive improvement district in the city of Omaha, then we are, we are quote-unquote unfunded, and that we have no accelerator. Our Clean and Green Team is out there three hundred and sixty-four days a year. We only take Christmas off to pick up curb-line litter and maintain our beautification efforts. We have seventy-five blocks in our district, and we have only two employees on the street. And this means that as our population intensifies, our litter intensifies, and our little team is madly struggling to stay on top of some of our most basic tasks. In addition, the needs of our community go far, far beyond our basic tasks, and we find ourselves every day responding to requests that should be within our workload, but that we often don't have either the staff or the equipment resources to accomplish. A few examples of this would be everything from power washing our alleys and some of our areas with major bird invasions, some tree trimming and replacements, and, you know, everything from the installation of dog waste removal stations to public art. We have our finger on a little bit of everything. So to say that we're spread a little thin is a major understatement. So over the last three or four years, we have been identifying our community's needs, and we really feel like we've come up with a plan that includes both an increase from our base constituency and the ability to seek some outside funding through our newly-created foundation. In fact, we've already sought several smaller grants for equipment upgrades, and we're just about to begin work on a new grant that would fund further security officers, which is one of the other main programs of our mission. We see this requested revenue increase as the first step towards the future of a more influential and effective organization as the whole, and we are very pleased to say that we have unanimous support of some of our highest, of all of our highest-valued properties, a few of which are here today to show our support. And those folks, their payments are absolutely the highest that we receive. We've also received the support of the majority of our smaller properties, our business tenants, and our residents. So the important stuff is right here. What you're seeing right now is the average impact that this will have on our assessed properties. And as you can see, at the end of five years, these are the numbers that are kind of the most important at the end of the game that we're looking at. The average resident will see an increase of about sixteen dollars, and a commercial property will see an increase of about three hundred and fourteen dollars. So we are not asking for the moon, but what we are asking for is gonna make a huge impact just on our small, little team. And again, we have done this over several years, really reaching out to find out exactly what people want and what their giving threshold is. We're confident that right now what we're presenting here is, in addition to the work of our newly-formed foundation, something that will really create an impactful change and will allow us to better serve the needs of our downtown neighborhood. I am joined by my board president, Dan Emanuel, and Arnold Reeves, and the audience, who was our board treasurer. And then we have First National Bank, which is one of our top five properties. We also have our governing board, which is the Business Improvement District. We have that board president, Brian McGee, who is one of our large, or, excuse me, one of our small, large businesses, owning the upstream brewery. And in addition to that, we've got a few other folks here. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dan and let him say a few words, and then we'll be here to ask some questions or answer questions.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Holly. I'm Dan Emanuel, four-sixteen South Fourteenth Street. I'm a current chair of the board of the Downtown Improvement District. I only have a couple of comments to add. Holly talked about our Downtown Improvement District Foundation. The levy increase that we're asking for today will only fund about ten percent of the need, the additional need that we see the good that the Downtown Improvement District can do for the downtown area. We will raise additional needed funding through a combination of organic increases in assessable values within our existing boundaries, boundary expansion, and the Omaha Downtown Improvement District Foundation. We hope the foundation will play an important role in the effort, and we want to express that the foundation is open for business. That's the Omaha Downtown Improvement District Foundation, sixteen-twenty Dodge Street, Number one forty, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-oh-two. Finally, I want to also say that one of the enabling initiatives of the downtown master plan is to increase the authority and scope of the DID. One of the ways it tells us to do this is by developing an expanded budget. So we feel we're doing what we're supposed to do. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, I wanna thank Holly and the cadre of downtown enthusiasts and supporters for coming today. And I think back to two thousand and nine, I had just been elected, and my predecessor offered to meet with me to kind of give me some, you know, laze of the land, so to speak, over an iced tea out at Wee Fields. Should've been downtown, but that's where he wanted to meet, and so that's where I had to go get the info. But one of the first things we had to do and deal with was the renewal of your downtown BID so that the DID could keep going. And I was informed about how contentious the first setup of this original BID was, and the room was filled with people, and divisions were deep. And the sunset clause was put in as a way to demonstrate to those who were skeptics that this organization had a limited time to prove its value to the downtown area. Well, I was braced for this big contentious hearing that was sure to come, that I was promised would fill the room, and it was about as many people as here today, and all but one, I think, were in support. And so I thought, well, not to steal anyone else's phrase of "mission accomplished," but you accomplished your mission that you had been charged with in terms of proving your value. And when you came to me a few years back about this idea and the needs, I was receptive because the number-one service requests that I receive for downtown are in the areas that you are helping fulfill and clean up, the Green Team. And there are more requests than you can get to in a day. I asked you to survey your members, to come up with consensus, to get the support of your group, and if you could do all that, I think that you would probably find yourself where you are here today, with no one coming down to testify in opposition. And I have not had one person contact me in opposition to this. So you've learned from what you should've had in the first with an annual increase built in. Every other business improvement district has adopted that model. No one anywhere that I'm aware of, particularly the ones that are in my district, has complained about those built-in features for a modest increase annually. Your other means of trying to get more money in terms of your foundation and the valuation increases is a good idea, and I'm glad to see that you incorporated it. And finally, I would say that you were very, very modest in terms of the ask of a budgetary increase of forty thousand since you first began, I mean, over a decade ago. So put all that together, and I think that explains why there's nobody here shouting and screaming in opposition or leading any charge against you. So congratulations to you on the hard work. I hope when this comes back that my colleagues will support it. And if anyone has any questions about what's going on downtown, there's a lot of good people in here that have all the inside information, so. And if you have any need to see the proof of what the need for the work is, there's a folder that Mr. Emanuel's holding on to that has some photos in it that...
Pretty scary.
Pretty tough stuff to show what the need is, but no need to put out there and give people a less-than-favorable impression of downtown, which is what we're trying to put some mojo back in downtown, and you guys are doing a lot of hard work to do that, so thank you.
Thank you. I would like to follow up on one comment that Councilman Jerem just made. We reached out individually to our top five largest properties, which are by ordinance, given a seat on our board, and we give them a little bit of a special treatment simply because they're paying the most. So we reached out to them individually to make sure that they were gonna be okay with this ten percent increase, and all five of them said, "Why aren't you asking for twenty percent?" And we said, "Wow." We chose the ten percent because we thought it was going to be something that would be very palatable to those of us like me who are a resident down here, and a sixteen-dollar increase is a sixteen-dollar increase. So thank you very much for your kind compliments. We hope that we have accomplished the tasks that have been before us before, and we really hope that with this expansion that we're gonna be able to take on a hell of a lot more as requested.
Thank you. Mr. Festers.
Thanks, Mr. President. I would commend you as well. I was, I remember those days of contention well, as also having been a planning board member at the time, and I came to the planning board, of course, before I went to the city council, and I was supportive of it then and still supportive of it now. And having gone through this a couple of times myself now, in Dundee and Benson, it is very difficult to get the consensus that you've achieved, but it's best done by showing the results that you've achieved, and that gets people on board pretty quickly. But it does take over communication and a lot of effort to get where you are today, to have a lot of consensus behind your approach here in an expansion. So I wanted to commend you on that, too, and look forward to supporting this next week as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Just real quickly, I had one person in my other job who I work with, actually lives in the downtown area, and he got the notice, he just asked me to look into it. I think when I called Bernard Endenbosh from the Law Department, he said it was the first and only question that of, I think I'm gonna get the number wrong, of fifteen hundred notices that were sent out somewhere in that neighborhood, only one. So I commend you on how well you got your constituency to go along with this.
Thank you very much. It was not easy. Actually, that's not true. It was very easy. Truly. Thank you. Truly. And I think that's the proof that we're doing it.
Just a few years.
Just a few years.
Thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Appreciate it. Next item.
Item 43, an ordinance to approve the Omaha Downtown Improvement District Association 2018-2019 Budget and Work Plan and the 2017 Omaha Downtown Improvement District Stakeholder Survey Results, and levying a special tax and assessment on all lots and pieces of real estate within Business Improvement District, Number 6874, in the city of Omaha, in the amount of $465,830.74.
Public hearing agenda item number 43 is today. Proponents, please.
I'm not gonna go into too much depth here, because I think you are already well aware of what we are doing. I want to make sure that you know that the budget that we submitted includes that 10% increase. I'm going to, just for the sake of time, show you our overall budget. This is a simplified budget, and we do have a more broken-down one if you so desire. But you'll see that even with this increase, we are still below $450,000, and that all of the additional income is gonna go into that management line, which is where we put all of our staff, even when our staff is 100% program-driven. So we do have two staff members, myself and my communications director, and our time is spread over a couple of different programs, but we continue to list it all in management because that is the easiest way that our auditors can get that information out to everyone. But all of the proposed $40,000 that will come in will go straight into one full-time Clean and Green Team person. So with that, I would hope that you would approve this year's budget and work plan, and if you have any further questions on the work plan, which is in your packet, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 44, an ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code, Chapter 10, Article 5, Division 5, entitled Small and Emerging Small Business Program, to modify the program's definitions and certification criteria.
Public hearing agenda item number 44 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Non-action items, items 45 through 56, do not require a public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and our vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Motion, Jaram. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed. Meeting is adjourned at 3:32 PM.